All right, let's, we know we're all here, so let's, let's start off. Welcome.
Popular.
So, welcome, everybody. Let's, we'll begin with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know, I remember you all. All right, welcome, everyone, to the meeting of the Westwood Planning Board. My name is David Atkins. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. And all of our meetings are recorded by the Westwood Media Center. If there's anyone else wishing to record the meeting, please let us know. As a reminder, please turn off your cell phones. The agenda is available at the back of the room. Meeting will follow the order on the agenda. It will be civil, and all people will be treated respectfully. The format is that when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments, then board members will ask questions of the applicant. Then the public will be given an opportunity to comment. When it's time for the public comment period, the chairman will call those wishing to speak to the podium. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. All comments and questions shall be directed through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. And I also had a suggestion from our last meeting that it would be helpful if we kind of explained a little bit more about the process as we go along and kind of, and also as we make a decision to state kind of our rationale for that a little bit more. So I may ask some obvious questions, or just try to do a little more. Tonight, we only have a couple of items, I think, on the agenda, but Abby, are there any changes?
No changes.
All right, so the first item on the agenda is 446 High Street, Approval Not Required Plan to Divide Single Family Lot Into Two Lots. And is there anyone here for that, or is this?
No, no, I don't think so. Nope, the applicant's not here tonight.
So, an approval-not-required plan just is essentially a property owner wants to divide their property or change the lot lines, and as long as it meets the requirements of frontage, it doesn't, it's not considered a subdivision plan. So, you might ask, why are we here approving something that we, where it's not required? But we have to look at it and see that it meets those requirements, and if it does, we endorse it. And if there's, sometimes there's public comment, but I don't see anyone here to speak on this, so Abby, do you have anything else to add?
No, just, there are two requirements for you to review in these approval-not-required plans. It said it has, meets a minimum of frontage in the zoning, and it has the vital physical access. So, because there's already a road there, frontage on High Street, and then frontage on Fox Hill Street, you're essentially, you're reviewing that it's not considered a subdivision under the subdivision control law. And so both, the new lot is being created with the frontage on Fox Hill Street. That has 125 feet of frontage.
I don't see anything here about the shape factor. Is that a requirement for this?
We do check the zoning. It's not a requirement necessarily for you to review, but we do check that, and it met all the zoning requirements. This applicant did submit it to myself and the building commissioner in advance, and he did review. One thing that the building commissioner did review was the, that it had the building width requirement, which is the 125 feet back to the building line. And this plane, the second lot, does meet the building width requirement.
He's not demolishing the existing house?
It's shown to remain. The existing house and the existing barn are going to remain on, on the High Street lot. And so the new lot is being created behind it on Fox Hill.
Isn't the existing barn, isn't that a residential unit?
I think it, I think it does have an, or it used to have an-
The photographer was using it for a while as office studio or something.
It may have been an accessory apartment at one time, or some kind of accessory use, I think.
So this is right at the end of the street here. This is on the corner of Fox Hill and High Street, that old barn and old house. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Then I guess someone would make a motion that we find this is a-
I'll make a motion that we find 446 High Street, approval-not-required plan. Didn't I start with that? I apologize. I make a motion to approve 446 High Street and to divide two single-family, divide one single-family lot into two lots. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Haul those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that motion passes, and we can, shall we sign this after? Why don't we sign this afterwards? Just remember not to leave without signing it. Okay, the second, moving on to the second item on the agenda. 215 High Street, pre-application review of the preliminary open space residential district approval for March 2018 for senior housing. Good evening.
It's a lot different than the last one I came to in the middle school. My name's Michael Yanoff. I live at 21 Long Mido Drive in Westwood. Been a resident there with my family for 20 years now. And I'm here to present the project that my partners and I are hopeful to develop here in Westwood at 215 High Street. My goal here tonight really is to reintroduce the project to the board members that we've already met with numerous times, and to also meet the new board members who are not familiar with it and kind of populate the concept and field any questions. But I'll give a little background first, how this whole thing started. As I said, 20 years here in Westwood. My wife and I have three children in the school system. My youngest is a senior now, and we're faced with the prospect of being empty nesters next year, and decided we need to downscale our house, like so many other people in the town are thinking. And, you know, we really, we live at Stevens Farm. We really like the community feel there. Some of our best friends we've made there. And we were looking for something similar. The one thing we both agreed on was we weren't, we didn't want to move to Boston. We wanted to stay in the town. We love the town. And when we talked to other people, neighbors and friends, we found out a lot of people are in the same situation. They wanted the same thing. But we really couldn't find what we were looking for, and that's when I spoke with my good friend and partner, Lee Barbieri, who grew up in Westwood. And he had recently completed a project in Weston called Highland Meadows. And I went over to see it. It was just about all finished. It was 70 homes, much bigger, but it absolutely beautiful. That's a picture of one of the homes there. Absolutely beautiful project. The homes were gorgeous. They were the perfect size. They were extremely well-done. It was a 55-plus, and it had a lot of the elements we were looking for. So I made it my quest to see if we could build something like that in Westwood, because I thought it would be something we would not only love to live in, but the town could be proud of. And that led me to 215 High Street, which had a very kind of sordid past with other developers trying to do much larger projects on that. And we put it under agreement, and we spent a lot of time and money getting it to a point where, earlier in the year, we got it approved for the density we were requesting. Shortly after that, as we began to dig in more into the numbers, we were having difficulty making the economics work, primarily because of the affordable component. As you know, we need, for this kind of density, we need to do three affordable homes onsite originally, but we had a lot of discussions and got favorable response to do off-site affordables, which was very helpful. But even at that, with the home prices rising so quickly rapidly in the town, it just made it really, really difficult to make the numbers work. And once again, we're not just your typical developers that come in and build it as cheap as possible, as quick as possible, and leave. We're actually building it for ourselves. We have a third partner, John Salvatore, who is also a resident of Westwood, and lots of friends and neighbors in the town that have approached me saying they'd like to live there as well. So if we're going to live there, we're going to build it right and not skimp. And so unfortunately, after a lot of time and effort and getting approval for the density, we kind of bowed out of the project back in April, because we couldn't make the numbers work. Now, just because we bowed out doesn't mean we stopped working on it. So we worked on it through the summer, kept on trying to figure out how to make the numbers work, talked a lot to the current owner. And we're at a point where we think we can re-engage and bring this project back. And that's why I'm here, really. We're at the point where we need to make some commitments if we want to move forward on it, and we wanted to just talk to the board about it, reintroduce it, you know, introduce it to the people that haven't seen it before, and field any questions, and kind of take your temperature on, on it, since it's been, you know, a few months since, since we were last here. Is everyone familiar, have you had a chance to look through it? You know, it's just kind of high-level. The land lends itself to doing 20, I'm sorry, 19 units, made up of 11 individual detached homes, and two larger townhomes with four, four attached townhomes in it. And what else can I tell you about it? You know, the, the affordables would be offsite. We were required to do three affordables. We had to put under agreement an additional piece of land to meet the zoning bylaws of 400,000 square feet. So the neighbor behind, you can see that gray, gray area, we have that parcel under agreement. And so that got us compliant with everything we needed to do. We designed them in such a way that they met the requirement for two bedrooms for the 55-plus bylaw. There are, there are all the other rooms that have six-foot-wide, I think it was cased openings, to meet all the, all the requirements. They all have basements, the detached homes, the townhomes do not. So we put a, we put a lot of time and effort. We also, the other thing I should say is, we met with every neighbor. This was a, it's a very, very tight neighborhood group. And they, they came out in force, if any of you were on the board, when the last developer tried to do something here. And they, and they succeeded in halting that development. We took it upon ourselves to meet with each individual neighbor. We did a screening review, so a lot of the, a lot of the screening you see in the trees there are actually a result of meeting with each neighbor, them expressing their concern from, literally from a window. They said, I don't want to see, you know, a house from here. And I guess to that credit, to our credit in that respect, the last meeting we were at, no one showed up. There was one letter, I think, submitted, an email submitted by one concerned neighbor. I emailed everyone prior to this meeting tonight, and no one's here, which makes me think that they're still supportive of it. And so that was, that was a big thing. We don't want to get in fights with our neighbors, especially if we're going to live there. And, yeah, that's the project. Those are the detached homes. They're all, they have great floor plans, first-bedroom master with nice living space, two-car garage. Even the, even the townhomes have two-car garages. Those are the, the two quads, we call them, with four units each, two, again, two-bedroom units, first-floor master. Oh, the other thing, they're all very low-profile, as you can see, they're more, their dormers are on the second floor. So it almost looks like a one-story house with a dormer, even though it's, it is two stories. Neighbors really like that, so they don't see really high, large homes. And we really want to have that kind of, that village feel. The interiors of the, you know, the other thing, yeah. And here are the finishes. That, that was another big thing. You know, we want it to be a really, you know, high-end, again, because we're living there, and this is similar to, these are actual pictures from Weston. You know, we used very high-end materials, meticulous detail. They're, they're really beautiful on the inside, extremely well-laid out and thoughtful in the design. And you can see there, they're, you know, they're essentially one-story homes with dormers. It's the one in the middle. And they just have a really, when you're, when you're driving through the street, it's just, they just have a very, you know, kind of cozy feel to them. They're almost, it's just like a very small footprint. This is just, you know, the, the biggest issue, if any, with the neighbors was traffic concerns. This was a study done for the last project, which was much, much larger than our project, and the traffic study came out saying it wouldn't, it would minimally increase traffic. So ours would be far less than that. This is, Abby, what do you call that?
Oh, this is the proof plan?
Proof, proof design, just that, that's what we could do there, I guess, with density. We have no intention of, of building that many quads. And that's basically the, the final project. So we're, we're at a point where we want to move forward, finalize a, a deal with a property owner, and start to engage an engineer for a full set of plans and engineering, which is a big commitment. And before doing that, we didn't want to just dive in. We really want to, as we have in the past, we want to continue to take feedback from the board and... That's it.
Thank you. I see, I think you adjusted the driveway a little bit, right? Like the, in some of the earlier plans, we saw they were complicated things, and now it seems like it's a nice, open-
Yeah, I think some of them, I think some of the ones in back were a little more complicated. They were longer. You know, just that one in the, in the corner is, is the longest driveway, but it, I think we cleaned it up a little again.
Can you talk about the entry?
No, that was my next, are there two entrances or one?
Yeah, that was with the fire department, actually, for access, to be able to have the ability to get in with a fire truck and to meet the 500-foot requirement for a call to side.
The second, yeah, so that's a fire, a fire road here, coming in. And, you know, that's the main entrance, the main entrance there. According to the fire chief, we prefer that be paved.
Yeah, essentially, it's a, it's a system that goes in the ground, and grass grows through it, but you can put, you know, you put dump trucks or fire trucks through it without any trouble, so it blends into the landscape. But his feeling was, if it's not paved, it won't get plowed. So he really wanted it paved.
And the one you approved in March showed the paved, paved for the second entrance as well.
Did you have any other staff comments?
No other new comments at this time. I mean, when the preliminary review in March, the planning board approved the density of the 19 units, and then had recommended, or you had given initial support for affordable, the affordable units being offsite, but you wanted them to be, you know, located, I guess, at another location. You were supportive then in March of at least the three units, of 15%. And then you had recommended considering a community facility, trails, and the perimeter landscaping. Be incorporated to your special permit.
Yeah, so we discussed, I mean, this is an, you know, kind of working backwards. The community facility is, is kind of interesting. It's a 55-plus development, but it's not like your, your parents' 55-plus development. These are still very active young people that drive and get along, and, and, you know, there's not really room for a community facility. We talked about maybe a gazebo. I think we might have shown that in there, in, in the middle. We've also had conversations with Fox Hill, who has been very supportive of the project, and they've offered, if we're interested, to be able to use their facilities, which is literally across the street, walking distance. So if that becomes a, you know, if that's a, a major issue, that we have a number of ways to address it. The, you know, the affordable is still really our most sensitive topic. What we're trying to avoid is just any big surprise. There's always surprises, you know, when you're doing a project like this, but we're trying to avoid any big surprises. That, that's a big one, just because of the expense. The economics of that is really what pushed us to walk away from it, and, you know, and, you know, prices aren't going down. I was on Zillow tonight looking just to see what was available. And, you know, there's still, there's, there's homes. And I think, I think we can make it work. We, we all think we can make it work. We'd love to be able to find a two-family. There's just not a lot of them, and, you know, two-family and a one-single detached would really economically be best. But, and we have some time. You know, something might come up. But even, even with three individual homes, we think we can, we can make it work. It's just, it's an expensive project for, you know, when you, there are no inexpensive homes in Westwood, and the really inexpensive ones still need work. And, you know, we're getting about, reimbursed about $200,000, I think, for each. So you're in the hole roughly 300. It's a, it's a million-dollar expense at the end of the day. And we're not looking to make money off this project. That's not the intent. We certainly don't want to lose money. You know, that's, that's definitely what we're sensitive, most sensitive to.
The open space, is that going to be maintained with association fees, or?
Absolutely, yeah. So it'll be similar to Weston, where there'll be an association put in place. And maybe you can talk more to how it operates.
Sorry, so you're going to have to go to the microphone, please?
Lee Barbieri. And yes, there's a traditional condominium association where fees are paid into, and everything is maintained in common. And we see exactly the same system here as what we used in Weston, which restricts your ability to change the outside space. So everything from what the homes look like, to the colors of the homes, to the landscape, essentially are all cared for in common. And so it essentially guarantees what it looks like. And oftentimes, there's a small, common area in the back of every home, and that's what we did there as well.
So does that, is it common, so the people who live there, would they, are they able to walk around all this open space?
Yes, exactly. And just in the very back of those homes, there's a very small area. So if somebody wanted to do a small garden, or they have their little patio, that's very typical.
I don't think we show, we don't show a walking path there, you know, but certainly people, there's room to walk around.
Well, yeah, I think the question was if, if in fact, it's all open for people to walk through. Is that what you're, is that what you're saying, within the community?
Yeah, within, I would assume, within the, this community.
Yeah, yeah.
But just that there is, I see the open space in the back of the pond and stuff, and just, I don't know if people would want to be walking through each other's backyards and stuff.
Yeah.
But it, it's, as an open space thing, it would be, I'd like to see it be, so they could make use of it somehow.
In Weston, we connected into a trail system even, and most of the time goes to maintaining the trail system, but it actually doesn't get a lot of active use. They're trying to actually connect it to a broader system. The issue here, I think, is it's a self-contained lot, and so it's not as if you could create it, you know, a great trail system to something else. I think the reality, as you said, it won't be people walking through others' backyards.
And the, the community gazebo is basically just, just a gazebo in the middle?
Yeah, really, that was, that came out after a discussion about having a common building in some way, and that's, the gazebo was proposed in the center of that open space in the middle. There really isn't room, and I don't honestly believe that there's a need in a, in a, a development of this scale for a community center.
I think one of the issues before the, the affordable housing thing, I do think our consensus here was that the off-site approach is okay. Like I would say, we're no one's, we're not suggesting that you have to make one of these large houses be an affordable house. So I think that's clear on that. And I don't know if, has anything changed in terms of the, to get the three units? You just, how would you do that? You'll have to buy another house in town and make it affordable and kind of-
Exactly. So, and we've, at the time, we reached out to many of the people that own multiple-family homes in town, and we didn't really get any response as far as being able to buy like a two-family home. I think we looked at a two-two-family home side-by-side, but we really didn't get any response. There was one two-family on High Street early in the project that we wanted to buy and renovate, but that ended up going under agreement. So as we've looked at this over the last six months, what ends up happening is some single-family homes that are relatively small and need a lot of work come on the market, and some are still on the market, actually. And our view is, given a certain amount of time, we think we could find enough of those to fulfill the three-unit requirement. And you, you mentioned offsite. Just to remind, when we talked about this originally, of doing offsite, the most important thing we found in the last development is that doing family affordable is really what mattered in, in Weston. I don't know, we had tremendous difficulty actually getting people to, to work within the over-55 community, and there was a giant need for family affordable. So that's what we had originally proposed, and I think the board, as you said, was accepting. I think it's a better fit for the need.
Right, I think that we have a lot of, we have a lot of one-bedroom apartments. I mean, anything that can be a two-bedroom, of something that a family, a small family could have access to, that's a greater need than, than having them have a big house in a development like this. Did other people, anyone else have?
Yeah, I had a couple thoughts. The last time a developer tried to develop this land was a 55 and older community. I was on the board at the time.
Yeah.
And a big concern from the neighbors at that time was, we have a lot of very large homes here, and now you want to put something else here, and it wasn't keeping with the neighborhood. I'm glad to hear that you've had communication with the neighbors. Maybe, maybe they're tired of fighting? Maybe they love this? I don't know. I haven't talked to them. But that is something that, I'm, I'm not living in this neighborhood, so it's not objectionable to me, but we represent the people that live there. So we have to keep those thoughts in consideration. So it'd be great if, I think they even went to the trouble of hiring an attorney.
They did.
Yeah, I remember him. So that would be something still weighing on my mind about, are they really signing off on this aesthetically? And I know you said you reached out to them, and no one has objected, so I'll have to take you at your word at this point.
Well, yeah, I'll address that, too. You know, first of all, just living across, you know, I'm, I'm in that area, too. I'm, and I, we live in that, in that neighborhood, in Stevens Farm, and we, so we're friends with a lot of the people that are butters and, and around there. So we've had candid conversations with all of them. You know, there's, there's no sugarcoating it. They would all prefer an individual to buy it and keep it at horse farm. The alternative to that is the developer's going to buy it and do something there. You can, I believe, by right or by approval, subdivide into three lots. And so a developer could essentially come in here and build three big homes. That's not appealing to them, because now you have swimming pools and, you know, two-story homes with high roof lines that they see, and, you know, maybe kids and play, and, you know, swing sets, all, all, all things that won't be allowed in our association. These are very, again, very low-profile homes. When they look out their windows, they likely won't see a lot of them, A, because of the screening, B, because they're, they're, they're small. So would they prefer, you know, an individual to buy that whole thing? Yes. But short of that happening, and no one that's been a year and a half, it's been on the market, and no one has, has approached them for that, this is, I guess, I hate to say the lesser of two evils, but, you know, it, they, they, they like the approach. They've, some of them have gone to Weston and seen the homes, you know, to see what they really look like, not, you know, not take our word for it, and they, they like them. In fact, some of them said they would like to live there. So, yeah, go ahead.
Say one thing?
Yeah.
So you said that no one objected, but I think in the last, there wasn't a neighbor who was not a direct a butter, but did send a letter objecting. There was a, a notion of this is the estate area of the town, and they didn't think that this belonged. So I think, I just want, I just want to clarify that. There was doubt, there is, and I don't know if he still exists, is still concerned, but I think the one thing that came through, and the same thing happened in the last development we did, is that the neighbors took some level of comfort, understanding that we are going to landscape, because we don't want to see them any more than they want to see us, and that once it's landscaped, it's, it doesn't change. So the issue of having a neighbor who clearcuts right to the line, and all of a sudden you can see a large house, versus having, yes, more- and all of a sudden you can see a large house versus having, yes, more structures, but highly landscaped and almost becomes invisible, I think, was attractive to a number of the neighbors. So I think there's a certain benefit to that.
Other thoughts, is there a basement in these homes?
The detached homes all have basements.
Full?
Yes.
Everything but the garage?
Yeah, uh, yeah, everything but the garage, yeah.
Staircase going down, not?
Staircase, correct. And the, some will be walkouts, others actually are not conducive to walkouts. The, the quads do not have basements.
And maybe you can walk me through really quickly, 'cause the plans I'm looking at, it's really hard to read. The second floor?
Yep.
Has one bedroom?
One bedroom and a study, so.
Study.
In the, there is no two-bedroom requirement in Weston. So we took the design from Weston and adapted it to the bylaws here. So the, in Weston, these are two individual bedrooms. Here, what we do is we moved the wall and made this a study, and, and this is the second bedroom. So this is a, a large opening, and, you know, this is all open down, down to the staircase.
And that's true on, on both plans, one and two case?
Yeah, so there's two, I should've mentioned, there's two designs. They're both identical designs, just one is a thirty-six hundred square foot home, and the other's about a three thousand square foot home for the, for the two cases. But the layout is identical.
And the master's in the back left of this?
Yeah, the, the master is, is here with master bath and closets. And this is what, for the most part, became a media room, I think, in most of the?
A library office.
Library office, yeah, media room in most of the homes. I saw one, I think, made a big giant closet. And then, you know, dining room, living room, and just like a, a bachelor's pantry. And again, these are all case openings, and include, this is a case opening as well.
It's happened before in, in this town with fifty-five and older communities where things that started off as a study?
Yeah, yeah.
Walled off, and all of a sudden become a third bedroom.
Yep.
And the concern is, the fifty-five and older couple, who are fifty-eight or sixty, have a twenty-four-year-old son or daughter with a child. And they move back in, and all of a sudden, it's now a different feeling. So I think this board is mindful of that. And we've talked about it again, Polte was, was just here with condominiums. But we've had other fifty-five and older communities. And it's just, it's a hot-button topic.
I just, you know, we spent a lot of time on that as well, because, you know, they are full basements. And we did have the, the study upstairs. You know, and that's why, you know, we had them redesigned by an architect to be case openings to comply. Oh, I'm sorry. Everyone seemed to get a comfort level with the design before. But, you know, it's something we wanna be aware of if, if there's concern about it. Certainly, we'd rather know about that now. We can do certain things. For instance, in the bylaws, we can restrict, you know, certain things in the bylaws to make sure they have to get approval for remodeling or any kind of work that has to be done. What are some other things, yeah?
Again, we built seventy of these units in Weston. There was no bedroom restriction. Essentially, they could, they had three and four bedrooms. In the community, there were zero children. And the reality is, these plans were designed to be conducive to, you know, first-floor living. You know, the extra bedrooms were certainly designed where somebody could sleep over, without a doubt. Weston was mostly concerned with school-aged children. They didn't want, you know, unintended people living in these homes and then going to the schools. And they just said they, they didn't wanna introduce that many people under that specific requirement. That, or, you know, that overlay district was designed for over fifty-five, I think, much like this.
Yeah, obviously, the schoolchildren is a concern, but, I mean, they are paying taxes on this. So it's not, it's not like they're children going to school for free. I think it's more the feel of the community. And, and we understand, things happen in life, life situations happen. But we just, part of our reasoning for two bedrooms is to not make it easy to invite an entire extended family to come now live. I mean, with bunk beds and whatnot, you can, in the third bedroom, you can have a whole bunch of extra people there. And that's why we, we're a smaller physical town than Weston. We don't have the open space necessarily, do they do? So the two, the two-bedroom, I think, is something that we've all agreed works for this fifty-five and older community. So we're just, again, mindful of that. And we don't wanna make it easy for someone to go to Home Depot, buy some paneling, and boom, we've got a third bedroom.
Sure.
I think it's, it's maybe more of a concern like, not, not so much, oh, there'll be lots of kids or anything, but there's four cars now because, you know, there's more people living there. And, you know, and everybody now has four cars or something. And so it's, you know, it becomes something that it wasn't originally.
Sure.
What's, do you have an idea of a price point for these, for the single families, not the townhomes? I assume the townhomes wouldn't be as much?
Yeah, the town, the townhomes, we don't really know the exact price. We've modeled a, a series of ranges.
That's why I said, I know not exactly.
Something just over a million dollars in reality for the, for the units that are inside the development. We don't actually know until we get out there as far as what will people really pay?
I know, the market could change before you bring this. That's it for me for now. Oh, are, these designs are the ones that are in Weston?
Yes, they were done by?
Keeping the study open instead of making it a bedroom?
Yeah, well, in, in, in the case of the upstairs is, it's become an open space. But, yeah, the design itself is identical. They were done by CBT, a large architectural firm in Boston, who really specialize in these types of developments.
So I'm looking at, were you about to say something or?
No, you go right ahead.
So I'm just looking back at our previous decision and the bylaws. I think one of the things we have to look at is the, the community facilities. I understand the argument of they don't, no one needs it. But the bylaws are looking, saying that we can, requires onsite community facilities unless determined unnecessary due to the location of the development within walking distance. So facilities to serve the recreational and social needs of residents, unless it's unnecessary because it's close to other things. And so, you know, in the, just interpreting those bylaws, it's not that we have the option to just waive it and say, oh, it's just people, they don't need anything. So I think that's a challenge here to?
So two, two things. One, we, we discussed the, you know, the gazebos being a, you know, open meeting place as kind of fulfilling that need. The second is, which I kind of mentioned before, Fox Hill is in walking distance, has been very supportive of the project. We've talked to the manager, and he has said if we wanted, we could have an arrangement with them to use their facilities. So that would essentially be in walking distance to us, and they have?
Well, one of the big challenges there is that it's, you can't cross the street effectively. There's no crosswalk, there's no, I know a person who works on that side and lives on the other side. And every day, it's, you take your life in your hands to try to cross the street.
It's still walking distance, you just can't get the?
That would be, but, and it's also, there are, I suppose there, there's additional walking, there are trails and things over there essentially, you can get access to.
There's a lot, it's, it's a?
But it's, again, how do you do that? Because you can't get across the street there because there's no crosswalk, or there's no, there's not really anything. You have to go down to Summer Street, and even then, there's nothing.
Well, you're still a mile from the center of Westwood, at Summer Street.
I mean, it's, you know, I, I wonder whether those, I mean, were those bylaws made for? You know, I mean, we walked down to the center of Westwood. That, that mile walk is not a big deal for us. It's, you know, we take our dog down there all the time. It, it's just funny, you know, it's hard to, for bylaws to keep up with changing times. But this community, you know, and I can't guarantee who's gonna live there. Maybe there will be, you know, people that live there that are quite a bit older than us. I feel like I'm old, I know. But, you know, for the, for the, the people that have come to us in support of the project that, that wanna live there, they're all kind of that, the same time of life as us. And that, that component is just not important to them. Now, that's not to say, you know, it is a bylaw, so it is, you know?
Well, I think the bylaw is actually ahead of things. Like, the purpose of the bylaw, I believe, was more to encourage development that did promote walking. And so it's not sort of an older thing. It's like a, you know, when something comes, I want it to avoid just a standard, traditional sort of cul-de-sac community. But something that's?
You have to figure it out?
Andrea Yanoff, Twenty-One Long Meadow, Michael's hus, her wife. But, like, I was saying to him, I'm looking at this as my home. Like, where I live in Stevens Farm, like, I don't wanna, you know, a community center. You know, I, I don't wanna, I don't know, I want it to feel like my own home in a neighborhood that I can walk my dog, and there's not, you know, a bunch of people. But that's just, you know, and I know some other people that are interested have the same feeling. We don't want it to be like an old, you know, neighborhood for old age or whatever, you know, we, we wanna?
You don't need a bingo room.
Right, right. We want our individual homes, like, we're living now, we just wanna downsize, so.
You know, it, it's a valid concern, I, you know, the bylaw is what it, is what it is. Is that, is that something that can, can be waived, or?
If we deem it not necessary, basically considering they can walk somewhere?
Yeah.
For access to such a thing.
In reading this, it says if they deem it not necessary due to its proximity and walking distance. That's how the bylaw is written.
Okay.
Not that we can just say, ah, you don't have to do it, but the next one that comes along, yeah, you're gonna have to.
Yeah, yeah.
Even though you had essentially the exact same parameters.
We have to show some cause to why we'd waive it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Is it within the purview of the board to determine that a gazebo would be acceptable?
I, I think?
It'd have to be a really fancy gazebo.
We'll build a nice gazebo.
But, I mean, kinda what, what I'm thinking is that there are, you know, what, it makes sense what you're saying. Like, it's very reasonable. And then I see there's the open space area behind, you know, the social needs of the residents can be met. And, you know, it's that idea that they could, that there's some common areas that people can congregate in. And the gazebo is one, it's very tiny, seeing that little thing in the middle of the cul-de-sac. But, you know, maybe there's an idea of the fact that there's a, with a trail or some kind of a, you know, some walking trail around the edges. And the idea that the open spaces are for everyone to use, the proximity to, across the street. I wish I could figure out a way to get a?
Yeah, across the street.
A crosswalk or something opposed to a tunnel? A flight, a bridge.
All right through.
Pedestrian bridge across?
Put a light there, no?
No, but I don't, I don't, that would be, I, it's, I don't know what the, what the money issues would be on that. But I'm always looking for ways to, if there's some project where, we're trying to do a lot of things with that. Is, you know, we're gonna address affordable housing issues. This is an open space opportunity to perhaps use other open spaces around there, but for the lack of a safe way to get across the street. So I don't know if there's any?
I mean?
Or even like a, even it could be like a, some benches or some seating, outdoor seating or something?
Yeah, I mean, we could, around the pond, certainly, there's things you can?
A patio-type thing or something?
I can't remember what the topography was like down back by the pond.
It, it goes, it kinda goes slopes down, and then, and the?
It's wetland back there as well.
Yeah.
And the pond, it extend past the border?
It does.
So it's not fully enclosed to an end?
Well, the, the wet area extends beyond, the actual pond itself may not, but the buffer zones certainly does.
Yeah, I mean, there's dry land above, you know, above it. I mean, you could certainly put benches around it.
What would the diameter be, just hypothetically, of the gazebo?
There's not enough detail in there.
No.
It's something you'd have to explore. I think, yeah, the covered gazebo might get you there, you know?
I mean, you could do, you could do one a little bit bigger there.
I, I can't remember, I, I haven't, it's been years since I've seen the plans. But the older community that was here before, I thought they had a path going around the entire perimeter.
They did.
A walking path.
They did, yeah.
And that's why I was asking about the topography down by the back. And I'm, I'm looking at what I see, I have no idea, I assume it's accurate. But along the right side, as the road cuts in towards the middle by the single-family homes, there appears to be some, some space there that may work for, I don't know what, horseshoops? Something that, that could work, benches, as Abby said. Efforts made to make it more of a community. This is a different community than a typical subdivision.
Sure.
And that's, I think, the goal of this bylaw, as it's written, for that community amenity. So I, I think that's what the board is struggling with, is we're fitting a lot of dwellings on this. I, I get you're going for density, but it's, it's meaning that this community amenity is having to be pushed to the, to the side here in terms of importance. So we're trying to bring it back a little bit more into importance. We're happy to work with you, but, like, the, the last developer acknowledged, and they turned, I, I think the back building where you have the last four was a very large apartment building. And they turned half of the first floor into a public room with maybe a theater room and an open kitchen.
Right.
If someone wanted to have all their, their family over, thirty people for Thanksgiving type of thing, they made that. They, they ate the fact, you know, that they, they went down in numbers of apartments.
Yeah.
And they, they made that. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that right now, I'm just saying?
Yeah.
Because we are dealing with such a density in this footprint of a lot, of a, of a plot, then this community center idea, this community amenity, is being pushed to the side.
The, you know, the reality is, you know, so with the previous development, you had small apartments. These are, even the small homes are still large, at three thousand square feet. And that doesn't include the basement if you finish and put a pool table down there and all that. You know, well, we, I mean, we're very social people, and, and all of our, all of our, I mean, you're gonna ask Lee, everyone comes over our house for football every Sunday. I mean, to us, our lifestyle is, hey, everyone come over our house. That's where the meetings, you know, we don't wanna go somewhere else, we'd rather have you in our home.
I, I get that, and I wasn't suggesting you build a separate building somewhere to house that.
But I'm sure there's, I mean, there's got to be things we can do to bring people outside.
I'm, I'm curious, and not that it has any bearing on this, did Weston have any type of component required? What did they require?
Definitely had a whole community center.
Can you step up to the microphone? Your voice isn't being picked up by the?
It had a community center. So there were, it's a much larger development, seventy units on roughly fifty acres of land. And the price point was significantly different as well, as far as what would be supported. The average selling price was around three million there. So to build a community center was well within, you know, the economics of that development, honestly. I said this, and I said this before to this board, when Michael originally approached me and we start, did the math, I said, if you're asking me as a developer, would I be interested in, in being involved? I said, no, because from a financial perspective, it honestly did not make, make sense. Especially, we look at the, I mean, if you just look at the apples to apples, it made no sense at all. And, but I do wanna live there. My family's still here in town, and I, you know, a lot of our friends are here. So I, I really, I mean, we're gonna live here, there's no question. If, if, if we can build this, we're gonna live here. But there is a problem with economics between the land costs. The, the entire site is ledge. I mean, there's probably close to two million dollars worth of site work alone to make the site work. And, you know, Michael's been looking for, like, years to find a site. There aren't a lot of sites to, so I think if the board also wants this type of housing, this is actually, out of what we found, is a good location for it. And I know, and so we're happy to work with you. If there's a concept about putting stuff out closer to the pond, or I love the idea of a horseshoe pit, or whatever, I mean, we're happy to work with you. It's, it's just a question of what we can actually make work. And that's, that was why we originally took a step back because financially, even doing, trying to figure out how to get the affordable and everything else to work is why we stepped away.
One, you just triggered a thought. Are you proposing to build this on spec, or build a building as it's sold?
On spec. So it'd be like a, but the fact is, a number of, a bunch of the developments are already sold because it's us. I mean, we have, we have a group of probably six people without, I mean, that's just us. Never mind the other people that are within, like, a friend group that would like to live here. So I don't see that as being a problem. We didn't build Weston on spec.
We, we've had others that haven't been that way, so, and it's proved problematic. So that's why I asked the question.
Once you start, I, it makes no sense not to complete.
It's actually too expensive, yeah, to, to start.
We did essentially what was continuous production in Weston, whether we had units sold or not. And the reason that was, it was also important to the neighbors, frankly. And it was easier for us because it was easy to essentially do the entire development in a systematic approach and landscape as we go. It was very, really was a much easier process.
Well, from my perspective, if, if the surrounding neighbor, the community is, is, at, at the very least, not objecting, objecting to this, and we can work out something with this, as a board, with this community amenity, then I'm happy to, to work moving forward and see if there's a, a, a solve to this Rubik's Cube.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be all that complicated. I think we just, we just have to get creative, maybe some interlinking things, you know, maybe spread around. You know, something that can get us there.
Instead of one thing, a few?
Instead of one thing, maybe a few things that are kind of linked together some way, you know? And, you know, get us over the hump there.
Sure.
I think I'm, I'm hearing, you know, like, the, so back to this, the recreational and social needs of the residents. So you know a lot of the residents already, and they would say, we don't need a community center. We don't need a, a traditional thing like that. and they would say, we don't need a community center, we don't need a, a traditional thing like that, um, but I think, you know, like, if we come up with something or. Yeah, something that is definitely.
That would be much more fun.
You know, you wanna entertain in your backyard, um, and, and you wanna be able to kind of, if you're friends with the person next door, get over to their place, so there's not like big walls between everything.
Right, yeah, no, yeah, we don't envision any of that.
Yeah, there is none of that.
So I think designing it in an open, um, way like that, being back to the, the users, the people that it's for, if that's, if this is meeting their needs, then it's, again, we're not talking about you're gonna build something to spec that, for some future users, that, uh, you're trying to do it as cheap as possible, or whatever, no, this is like you are working to come up with what you and the other residents want.
But at the same time, we need to keep in mind, they're not, they're gonna be the only people living here.
Right.
It's in perpetuity, and so.
Yeah, correct.
We don't know who you're gonna sell to down the line, and they may need these types of amenities, you know, um, or desired, or, and that's why it's in the bylaw, 'cause the anticipation is, we think that might be something that the people in this buying public may want.
So I think attention to that, in terms of the, when you come with the full application and everything, it's an important component to this, it's like how this will serve, uh, how it'll meet those recreational and social needs of the, of today's residents, future residents, all residents, and it's different from a cul-de-sac sort of community.
Right, right, yeah, I think that, it's great input, I mean, I, Michael's, I mean, the original idea was to come back, because there are new board members, and also wanted to give opportunity to say, we got the preliminary approval, I wanna make sure that we explained, or would answer any questions that you have, so I think we're very embracing of the concept of actually adding to some of the outside amenities.
Absolutely, this was extremely helpful.
Yeah.
You know, uh, our next step is a, is a big commitment, so this was very helpful, you know, we, we wanted to get a comfort level, either way, you know, if it, if it looked like it wasn't gonna work, that's fine, too, we walked away before.
Keep in mind, there is one, obviously, one board member not here, so, I haven't heard from him.
Okay.
On this particular thing.
Which one was that?
Um, Mr. Brian Gorman.
And he wasn't, he's not.
He was here, he was here back in March, yeah.
Yeah, I think the, the issues with community amenities, he.
It's a bit important issue to.
I don't.
Oh, okay.
I'm not gonna.
Okay, I wouldn't.
I can barely speak for myself.
Yeah.
See, what you're saying is he's okay with it.
No, I'm not saying anything.
No, thank you, no, I, I, again, I appreciate the feedback, it's really, really helpful.
Thank you. And Abby, I'm gonna ask Abby the question, just to put out, this has been vetted by Land Use?
Right, yes, it was approved by Land Use, and then it went to the planning board in March, so the next step is the special permit application to this board.
We have a, we have a lot of work to do.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You sure you don't want to raise horses? It'd be a lot easier, wouldn't it?
It would be.
Sell one or two.
That might be more expensive.
Win the derby, and I think you make your money.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right, I think the, uh, next item on our agenda, comprehensive plan update.
So, the application for the steering committee is due on Friday, um, help spread the word, you've probably got some of my emails, I've been trying to do weekly emails, uh, weekly Facebook posts, um, have you gotten a line?
Do we have a number?
We have seven applications submitted so far.
And we're looking for eighteen, nineteen?
We said nine to eighteen, it would be good to have at least nine, we thought, 'cause nine sections, subject areas of the plan, then one person can be responsible for each, but I've had a lot of people say they're going to apply, or that, or asking questions. Um, when I came in this morning, I only had two, so I got, um.
You got five today?
I got five today.
Wow.
So I think, um, hopefully I'll keep following up with people, um, I've had, since Friday, uh, well, today and Friday, had a lot more calls and questions and people asking about the steering committee, so I think, I'm hoping, expecting we'll get more applications in the next couple of days, and probably on Friday.
And what's the process, next step for those seven, let's say we stop at seven, what happens with those names?
So the Board of Selectmen will, the, um, Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, so that's when they'll get all the applications, um, so I think they'll really just be provided with the applications, the packages, and then they'll review them at their, um, next meeting, which is November fifth, so they'll review them and likely make appointments or review the applications, so look to establish and appoint the committee at their November fifth meeting.
And then after that, presumption is we have a committee?
Then we have a committee, and we're gonna get started, um, so we're working on starting to update the data, staff is working on updating the data, the demographics, um, going through the plan, at least updating, uh, redlining information that's, um, been completed, um, so I will soon start once the committee's formed, so right now, I'll probably, I've been thinking about just some dates, but hopefully in November, where the committee will have their first meeting, um, so I'll probably hold some meeting rooms, and then once we have the committee formed, try to schedule their first meeting in, um, mid, uh, mid to late November for that committee, to get started, um, prior to the holidays. I, I'm sorry, I didn't get you an RFP, I was gonna dra, try and draft an RFP, but I, I was getting lots of questions and calls on Thursday and Friday last week, and I didn't get to yet, but I will, so I'll draft an RFP for the consultant, this is, we're looking for a consultant for the helping with the public facilitation portion and the vision session, so when I draft that, that's my next thing I wanna do, and I'll, I can send that out to the board and send it all to you for, um, if you have any comments on that. Let's see, what else is there, does anyone else have any, we gave out a bunch of cards at, uh, Westwood Day, um, so after Westwood Day, we did have, or as of Friday, we had a hundred and forty-nine people signed up on the Westwood Wire to receive notifications about, specifically about the comprehensive plan, um, related meetings, so we haven't had, we have about three thousand people signed up on our list served today, so a hundred and forty-nine may not seem like a lot, but it had only been about a week and a half, um, so I'm thinking once meetings start happening.
So there, there are like three thousand people on the general list.
General list.
You had a hundred and fifty, so that's like a five percent conversion, and you've got a lot, there are duplicates and things, and so that's, it's pretty good to just, for people to click through and do something, and there's, what, now, seven applications?
Seven applications for the steering committee.
What about other, um, boards and committees and things, I mean, do we, if?
I did notify, I notified staff to also help distribute to their boards and committees that we were looking for someone, and I had the contact, I sent it pretty much to every resident that I could think of that had ever, um, contacted me before, that I could just, I was just kinda, um, any projects I knew about, or anyone, I, just anyone I could think of, um.
Did it come from you, are you talking to email?
From my email blast, but then we did put it on, um, Facebook, on, oh, our new planning page and the town official page, um, shared it.
I saw those, I didn't see an email from you.
Oh, you, I sent it.
Doesn't mean I didn't get it necessarily, just saying, I don't, and I don't know if my wife got one either, and I don't, I don't know if she's on your list either.
I sent it to the planning board, um, are you not checking your planning board?
I'll look at it. I'll look again.
Did Everyone Else get it? Debbie, you got it, Mike, you got it?
I got it.
The Hometown Weekly, absolutely, they would give them, just send them the memo.
Yeah, they're dying for content.
Okay, okay, oh, right, okay, all right.
Yeah, that's right.
'Cause they will need, uh, what's today, Tuesday, like, it'd be next week probably before they could put it out there.
The application deadline is Friday.
Yeah, it's true.
So I should've already sent it to them.
Yeah, that's three days.
Can you do a robo-call?
I don't know, I mean, I think the town would have to make a decision.
I don't know if this rises to the level of robo-call urgency, is there, do we have provisions, if someone, in January, we're not heavily populated in the steering committee, do we have a provision to add another person if they show interest in January or something, or are they?
I think we could, I mean, if we don't have enough, I mean, there's no hard, we could get started and continue.
I did, I said, you know, uh, the selectman can at any time appoint.
I'd hate to see someone who's interested then, even if they're not.
I think we should go ahead with the home, since, get the Hometown Weekly, and if we have to extend, you know, it's not like a deadline, like, somebody send, turns it in at five-thirty PM on Friday, well, they won't, the town halls aren't open, so.
But it's different.
But I mean, they can, if we had someone who came in next Monday and was like, oh, I just missed the deadline by two days, of course, you'd consider them, because we probably won't have eighteen people by Monday.
I don't know, we might, I've had a lot of people say they're, they're interested, but, um, um, I'll try contacting the Hometown Weekly, yes. It's not like, yes, it's not like there's a, um, deadline, but we did have that October twelfth date, so we would want, you know, the people who did submit in time.
We want people to act.
Because the idea was to try to get started in November, but if we don't have enough people, and if we need more people, I'm sure we could continue to, um, look for people and someone could be appointed.
In this interest, are they indicating what section they're interested in?
Yes, that was one of the application questions we had checked off.
Do we have seven all in one, or do we have seven different, or a mix?
We have a, we have a mix.
Okay, just curious.
Are we going to extend?
I think the Board of, they'll probably make a decision, well, they'll have the time, so they'll probably wait until Monday, they'll get all the applications, and they'll see who they have, and then they'll probably, I mean, they will be making the decision at their November meeting, most likely, 'cause they'll just, they'll just be getting them on, um, on Monday, the fifteenth.
So they're not gonna, they're gonna sit on them for a few weeks.
Couple of weeks, yeah, two, three weeks. So if you know of anyone that might be a good fit, um, let them know, or you can have them contact me, get them an application, get that submitted.
All right, um, let's see, any other updates to?
No other updates that I can think of.
Meeting minutes? Did everyone have a chance to?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I looked down a little late.
I did not.
Okay, yeah, it was late, I'm sorry.
Carl did.
Okay, continue.
Uh, ZBA application, they saw, that's, uh.
There was one, um, eight sixty-six Gay Street, that is a, a hu, a house lot, and there's a garage, and there, an existing garage, existing two-car garage, and there's an application for accessory apartment on the second floor of the garage, um, so I had drafted a memo asking for, um, maybe photographs of the existing garage, 'cause there was no exterior, um, planned changes shown, um, and then recommended the, um, ZBA, um, is verify those design requirements, it would, looked to be slightly under the size requirement, so under five hundred feet.
In the past, there has been a tenant, or there's been a person living upstairs in there, I know, in the past, I don't know currently what the.
Oh, at this location, okay, I didn't know the history of it.
Where was this located?
It is, um, on Gay Street, um, close to Washington Street, uh, just, um, so you've got like the Hamlin School, and then, uh, maybe halfway between, it's across the street from where I used to live.
Oh, yeah.
What's the address?
Eight sixty-six.
Oh, is that where they just did all the, is that the brick house, the brick house?
It's a brick house, it's a.
This one?
Yes, 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 okay.
And you can see on an air conditioning window.
Yeah, that, that has been accessory apartment in the past.
Right, so it may be to legalize it, I think, that, that may have been, it didn't say that in the application, but I think now, I remember, I think there might be an existing kitchen.
Yes, it is a full.
And the building commissioner had, um, told the applicant to apply for an accessory apartment, so this might be one of the ones that after the recent change was encouraged to apply.
Okay. What about, what's going on with the associate planning board member?
Oh, yes, so we did, um.
The November fifth meeting?
November fifth, um, so Tuesday, November sixth is an election, so we, your meeting will be on a Monday, so we rescheduled, um, the planning board to be at the police station, we don't have any other applications right now, but that way you could do the joint hearing, the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to review the, um, Planning Board Associate Member positions, I'll get you those. I think there was only the two, Steve Raski and Steve Olenoff, that submitted, um, so the Board of Selectmen are meeting at the police station at seven-thirty, so you could meet there together, and that's when they're gonna start, we're gonna review the, um, steering committee for the comprehensive plan, so that way we can have the planning board over at the police station, too.
It says here he was at the town hall.
So I did book the town hall, I booked the town hall for you in case you have other applications, that way you'd have to just go to both places, go to the police station and then back to town hall. Your next meeting will, October twenty-third will also be at town hall, 'cause it's gonna be early voting here.
Is that, will that just be upstairs in the old selectman's room, or?
Yes, the old selectman's meeting room, yeah.
We don't have anything that's continued to that meeting, or nothing tonight?
You have two new applications, um, what's before you tonight, um, the application for High Street, the Starbucks property, uh, the parking, traffic, and the Brigham Women's, they were supposed to have gotten a special permit for the, the chemicals that they use in the building because of the Water Resource Protection District, so that's what's before you now, or at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, any, um.
They have, they have an opening coming up, don't they?
It was last week.
They already did, yeah.
Was it?
No, sorry.
Yeah.
We weren't invited.
Sorry, oh, I did send out the invitation, it was just so long ago, that's when I.
I was wondering about that.
I'm sorry, I forgot to send out the reminder, we got it.
Police station, I remembered, but then.
A long time ago, I'm sorry, it was so, it was like in June.
I think I got something in the mail.
Yeah, we got it really long time ago, I sent it.
Yeah, we should, um, do you even know what?
I forgot to.
What about all the other meetings and things, like, um, you know, do we have a way of keeping track of, I think I'm just the alternate on a couple of things now, but I get emails about stuff, and I don't know what it is.
Your committees?
Price of being popular.
I can't keep track of those, but.
That's you, that's I mean, figure out a way.
Nobody's emailing me.
Right, so I'm sorry, I forgot to remind you, but there was, um, uh, September twenty-seventh was the opening for, um, Brigham Women's, and we, I think we got the invitation in the spring.
October for them, I could be wrong.
Oh.
I ran into Abby at the gas station that night, and she informed me that she was just coming from a soiree.
Sorry.
Dressed in ballgown.
Oh, absolutely.
So Cafe Divas coming down soon?
Yes, um, so Patruchello is getting ready to submit the demolition perfect, permit for the Cafe Diva building, so that will be happening soon.
And the cleaners also at the same time, or no?
Yeah, I thought the clean is in the Cafe Diva.
The Taylor Building, yeah.
That's right. He did cleaning, too.
Yeah, okay.
What else, um, I, I thought I heard that, um, well, what else do you know about the Blue Heart Tavern and all?
That there, so there is no use proposed yet, I didn't realize that, but there is, but he is trying to get funding to re, to restore, so that is still in progress, but he is gonna, in the interim, relocate it to the location that was approved, or have to shift it out of the way.
Is there like a grant program or something, or what's the?
I think there is, but I can't remember where this money might be coming from, um.
Well, it'd be a historical building grant, I assume.
Can the town get one of those, the library? Or is that just for residents, I mean, uh, private owners?
I don't know, we could, we can always try, I don't, well, we had got the money from town meeting to do most of the relocation work. I don't know if it's a grant that he was looking to do, or, I forget where it was coming from, he's looking to secure funding for the Blue Heart.
Where's the transformer that they're talking about that has to be moved?
Oh, um.
Is that in, by Cafe De, or is it?
Um, I forget where it was, I forget exactly where it was.
Yeah, there's some, I don't know where it is.
Yeah, there is, there was a request to relocate the transformer for the Blue Heart Tavern to go, um, close to Washington Street.
Yeah.
Just trying to think of where the transformer is, though.
Well, my question.
It might be near the municipal lot, maybe.
You mean like?
Like the bank? I think, seems like there's something.
A small covered metal thing.
It's like a green steel, yeah.
Between.
Part of the site work that they'll have to do, relocate.
But it needs to be relocated, so I think the Board of Selectmen.
My question is, is he gonna relocate the Blue Heart Tavern unfinished into the project, like you say, he's gonna use it as a place, or put it. Like you say, he's gonna use it as a place, or put it, put it on its new spot, but it's not gonna be finished? I'm just worried that this whole project gets finished, and we're still sitting there with an old eyesore just sitting right in the middle of the project, waiting for some funding to be-
How long is it gonna be a house on blocks?
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't even know if he can handle the next, a second move.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It might just crumble into toothpicks, the next time we try and move it.
That's still being worked out, but it will need to be moved, at least for the first phase to work on the site work for the CVS. So it will need to step to the side.
Good luck to them.
This might be the transformer, the green box.
Yes, yes.
And that would be close to where the Blue Heart Tavern is proposed to go.
Is that next to municipal lot?
Yeah, it's right on that.
Between the, I think that's a bank?
Oh, yes.
What, was it a bank?
So that's where it is, okay.
Straight across the street from the CVS.
So there's one, a transformer between, um, municipal lot and the, the lock, was it the north? The lock, please.
There was a bank, it got robbed once, I don't know.
It's a security company.
Now it's a security.
Now it's a security company.
So Abby, when they, when they demo an old house, 'cause I know that they tend to tear down a lot of old houses lately around here, do they have to test those for anything, like asbestos or anything, before they tear them down, or?
Yes, they have to submit a asbestos report-
Yeah.
-to the building department and Board of Health.
They do, okay.
So I think we usually have that as a standing condition in our planning board approvals, but it is part of the permitting-
Before they can do it?
Before they can-
Disposal.
If you renovate, you renovate the check, so.
Yes, it's a pretty stringent-
And renovate, yeah, we see renovate and demonstrate.
All right, so the next, our next meeting is ten twenty-three at Town Hall. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
All right.